Here you go, you're unmuted.
Okay, we will call the February 12th meeting of the Lake County Planning Commission to Order. And roll call, Cherry Lind is absent tonight. Howard Tritz? He's not currently here. Edwards is here. Commissioner Stevens, yes. Commissioner Clark Barrow? Is absent and Commissioner Marufo. Roll call of county commissioners. Sarah Mudge. Commissioner Marcela. Commissioner Fiedler. All currently absent. Any changes or additions to the agenda for this evening?
Staff has none.
Thank you. And if we can call for the approval of the minutes for the January 8th meeting. I think you said that we don't have a quorum to do that at this point. So we will make a note on those minutes and pass that one. Any updates by staff?
Can you really kind of talk about those in our PowerPoint presentation? So kind of lead that to the end, if that sounds good.
And is there any old business that we need to cover?
Staff has nothing for either board.
That is about as easy a meeting as you can call. We will move on to new business.
Very good. All right, let me queue up here. Our PowerPoint for this evening. And. Just move it down a little bit. So Larry and Amy, we're going to pause at the very end for any questions. So we're going to go ahead and minimize participants for a little bit. But we're going to stop at the end and just open it up for any kind of questions that anyone has this evening. All right.
All right, thanks.
You bet. So welcome and of course, we are glad and so appreciative for your service to the county. And so we just had the DOLA training, which is a real high level, really information packed training. But how does it pertain to us in how your staff works for you? So we're just going to kind of start with some introductions. And I did imagine that the Board of County Commissioners were going to be here this evening, but they're not. So any of you that don't know who all of our county commissioners are. We have Jeff Fiedler is our current chair, Sarah Mudge and Kayla Marcela. And they might jump on here in a little bit. Our county manager is Tim Bergman and our county attorney is Chris Floyd. And then I'm just going to let, these are your main community planning and development team supportive staff. So I'm going to start with Cece.
Hi, everyone. I think I've corresponded with most of you via email, but I'm Cece. I am the planning admin assistant. So really Anne's right hand woman. So anything you need, any questions you have, please don't hesitate to call me, email me. And I can typically get back to you pretty quickly. But I work with Anne on a lot of the land use applications. So I'm pretty in the know and can get answers to you quickly.
And we're pretty excited that we are extending an offer. We're doing this like publicly, like I guess we're extending an offer to Cece to become our planner one. So we're hoping she'll accept the position. Thank you.
Bryce Erlich, I'm deputy director. So I work under Anne for the department. Some things I handle are GIS and mapping. So I kind of oversee all the county's GIS and mapping and data clearinghouse and things like that. I do have a staff member Tristan that helps me out with a lot of the nitty gritty and the actual analytical work. I think a bigger area that I specialize into is backcountry zoning. So I was actually on the planning commission of backcountry zoning. It was kind of in the final stages. It was a 10 year process, but I was around for the last couple of years of it to try to get it formalized and then pushed across the finish line. And then I did not anticipate being part of community planning and development after that. But it really worked out well that I have this kind of knowledge of this unique new large zone district that we had in the county. It's a personal passion of mine, just the backcountry areas and former mining areas. Hi there. So yeah, so and then I'm along with backcountry zoning, I'm very interested in mining and the history. And so I feel like I inform a lot of the conversations and everything that we have around mining applications coming in. And just give some historical context to especially in a lot of the areas where you have like some interface between historic mining areas and historic residential areas, which is pretty common here in Leadville. And then the big focus I'm working on now is I'm actually the county's water resources staff member. So I'm helping Sarah Mudge, who's been the commissioner that's kind of inherited the water resources portfolio from a prior commissioner. We're trying to bring that knowledge in-house and institutionalize a lot of our water knowledge and processes. The county has a pretty small portfolio of water, but it's really important, right? No more waters coming anytime soon. So we've got to be really careful about how we manage it and how we use it. So yeah, I think between backcountry and the history and the mapping and the water, that's kind of the main focus. But I feel like I am happy to jump in on anything too.
So yeah, thank you staff, amazing staff and Anne. Like Bryce and Cece mentioned, that if you ever have any questions, any one of the three of us are here to help you and can get you information pretty quickly. So reach out to us anytime. And then I was just going to ask, I know we just did a roll call of the planning commission, but just quickly, I'm not going to put anybody on the spot. If you'll just introduce yourself and just kind of quickly, kind of maybe tell us why you decided to participate in the planning commission. So David, if you want to.
No, I'm good, David. Okay. Sorry, yeah. So like a background on itself and then interesting for the commission?
Sure, sure.
Okay, perfect. I moved town like 12 years ago to work at a school down by a golf course. And yeah, have been looking for ways to sort of get back to Leadville, a way to be involved, a way to support what I perceive to be important decisions that are like informing the development of this place. And reached out to some folks, heard about and they're putting in the planning commission. And yeah, applied from there and I'm excited to learn and yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Joey Edwards, I've been involved with the planning commission for a little while now. I'm a general contractor here and I only work in Lake County and been pretty involved in the city as well. So this is a nice fit. It works well and it's amazing what you can learn about the county through the planning commission. It's been a good opportunity.
Jason Marufo, I've been here for about six years now and built our own house here. And when I say we built our own house, we built our own house. So I didn't have any contractors, sorry. So it's just an opportunity to kind of get involved in the community. I work out of Washington DC actually, so I'm at home quite a bit. And I figured, you know, I have a little bit of spare time to, you know, help out. And with all the changes we're seeing, you know, I thought, hey, maybe I could have some input and be helpful.
Awesome, welcome Jason.
Thank you.
So I'm Steve Stevens. My wife and I retired here five years ago, well, she retired here for five years ago. I retired about three years ago here. Worked in Texas, across the country for Raytheon Aerospace. So most of my background is in aerospace. But you know, we were, you know, we're very interested in being a part of the community. We live down in Twin Lakes and involved me and give me an opportunity to go help support that area. And I've always kind of been interested in strategic growth and planning and making sure that it's done properly. I've seen it done wrong in communities and they've reeled from it from years past and are following that. And we'll make sure that, you know, I get back to the community, but I also am trying to help strategically grow and develop the community properly, I guess is the best way to use so.
Welcome Steve.
Thank you.
And online, we have Amy Tate and Larry Markham. Amy is a member of the Board of Adjustment. Amy, do you mind giving us just a quick introduction?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I own Centennial Real Estate. I've been in Leadville since 2001, so over 20 years. And this was just a different board opportunity compared to the other ones that I've done before. So that's why I was interested.
Wonderful, thank you Amy. And Larry?
Hey, thanks. My computer died, so I'm just on my phone. I apologize for being talking to you on screen. I came here 40 some years ago and when they were raising the levels of the lake to create the energy generation plant. And moved here 27 years ago in Twin Lakes. And really want to keep the quality of the community. You know, as much as I can help facilitate into the same sort of environment that I knew when I first got here so many years ago.
Awesome, thank you Larry. Well, I think we're really fortunate to have amazing members of both of our very important boards. You, both the planning commission and the Board of Adjustment are essential to good planning in the community. And are really essential, the planning commission of course is a recommending board, Board of County Commissioners. And the Board of Adjustment hears variance requests or relief from the code. So they have the ability to listen to appeals as well as they also have the ability to provide variances in unique circumstances on a case by case basis. So you're both, your participation is really essential to us doing really great work in Lake County. I never know what to do with this lady. There we go. So just kind of some rules and regulations, and this is Chris Floyd. We did your introduction before you were here though. Our county attorney, she's been a very busy lady today. I'm surprised that she was able to take time for us, so thank you. Just wanted to kind of go over, there are bylaws available, recorded bylaws for both the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. I'm just going to give you kind of the overall basis of what's in there. They are available if at any time you'd like a copy of them, reach out to Cece. We maintain them on the hard drive. So if you would like a copy of the rules and regulations. But the planning commission is made up of five regular members and two associate members. The Board of Adjustment is three regular members and two associate members. Our planning commission dates are generally the second and fourth Monday of a month. Joey, you can attest to that occasionally staff will reach out and say, hey, we're really hit with a bunch of applications. Timing's off a little bit for the second and fourth. Can we call an additional meeting? Or could we change maybe our fourth meeting to a different time? But generally, if you want to like try to mark your calendars for attendance, we always try to hit those second and fourth Monday. And then the Board of Adjustment meets as needed. So they only hear applications when there's cause for a hearing. And so we reach out and find a time that works for a quorum of the Board of Adjustment. And when I say quorum, that means how many members, many of you may be very familiar with the term quorum, but just in case. It means how many members do we have to have present in order to make a decision that night? So for both boards, that's three. So if, I don't know, something like a pandemic hits and we're struggling to have enough members that can participate. And we have to make sure that we've got three in attendance. Otherwise, we have to table hearings to a different date. And then there are appointments within the planning commission and the Board of Adjustment. For the planning commission, it's the chair, vice chair and secretary. So tonight, we didn't put on the agenda that we're looking to seat chairs, but our next regular meeting of the planning commission, we will be asking to either for you to nominate someone or vice, or self nominate yourself for one of those positions. The chair really for the planning commission and for the Board of Adjustment is a very critical role. They navigate the hearing and we're going to talk a little bit about the public hearing process coming up. But they really take on the leadership of making sure that we're adhering to proper procedure doing during our public hearing and just keeping kind of control of our public comment section and just the hearing itself. The vice chair, oh yes.
And the bylaws allow for a quorum of virtual attendance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So ever since COVID, we do, so we would encourage, especially when we have hearings like tonight, when we're doing a training and you're virtual, not as probably, we were so happy to be able to support that hybrid kind of position. But we do ask that during a regular hearing, when you've got an applicant in front of you and they're doing a presentation, if there's any way at all, you can be present in person, great. We also understand that, thank goodness, we have that hybrid option. So we just, we support you being here either way, but there is a bit of a preference in being in person if you can. When we're having public hearings. It helps your board members too, because there just is, there's a dynamic that happens. And sometimes just being remote, you miss, you know, like what if sometimes we're having technical difficulties or it can be a little clunky. But hybrid is always an option. We'd rather have you here than, and hybrid than not here. So that is, we will always maintain that. The vice chair of the planning commission fills in for the chair. And the secretary, all they do, both roles on the Board of Adjustment and the planning commission, really are just make sure that what we record is accurate. Staff, Cece serves as your recording secretary. When she's gone, another member of our staff will be your recording secretary. But Cece generally takes all of the minutes and then presents them to you with the agenda. And then we will approve them during our regular meeting, like we kind of did tonight. Attendance, so we do ask that if for some reason you cannot be a scheduled hearing, that you please reach out to staff as soon as you know that you won't be present, so that we again, we're trying to make sure that we can achieve that quorum and we wouldn't have to reschedule. All of the public hearings that you will ever hear have already had notice requirements. We've published them 30 days in advance. We've noticed them on the property. So those dates are really important, but we again, understand things come up. And so if you can't make one of the meetings, please let us know as soon as possible. The bylaws do state that three unexcused absences, which I know sounds a little bit like a school term, but that's the way it reads, does result in an automatic removal from the board. So we've never had that happen in the 10 years I've been here. So I'm sure everybody will reach out and give us a heads up if they can attend. Your term is a three-year term, they are staggered. And so we will, this year when you are appointed, when we send you over, we're going to talk about some resources that we're going to get to you. We will show you your appointment so you know when your term is up. And already talked about appointments. The resources that we're going to provide you, you are all going to get, I believe Cece has already called and she's working on getting you a bound version of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is our master plan for Lake County. And you are joining the planning commission and Board of Adjustment at a very exciting time if you're new or if you've been on. We are looking to update our master plan in 2025. So during your term, we will be, everybody's term I think that is here. Heather and Howard's term is at the beginning of next year and then I'm thinking they'll reapply. But this will be a very big lift. The planning commission is responsible for adopting the comp plan. And this will be a community wide, the city's going to do theirs at the same time. This will be a community wide engagement. And so this, while the comp plan is not a regulatory document, it's an advisory document, but it is our vision. It is our north. It really is kind of setting our direction for us as a community. So you're going to be participating in a very new time in Lake County. We're also, I would say that we're seeing a lot of changes as you probably all that have been here. I think everybody with us has been here for a period of time. And there are a lot of new changes occurring in our community. So it really is time to reset and just make sure that our advisory documents are in order. So you'll get what we have currently in a bound version and Cece will be there at the printer, I believe. And so you'll be getting one of those from us. The other tool is our website for community planning and development is full of information. Everything that is happening in the department that we're working on, you will find online. The land development code is there. We don't necessarily print a copy of the land development code for every member, but it is available online. So you can look up the land development code at any time. It is on our website. So are all of our applications that are pending and any policies that we're working on. So right now, what you're going to hear next, and some of you have been engaged and then some of you have not, but the next policy coming before you will be our short-term rental regulations. And you can go online and look at all the information that we have to date on those regulations. So including like recordings of our town hall meetings. So the website is a great place to go and grab information whenever you're trying to, you know, look for information on something. We're also, we're also creating in the DOLA training, I love Casey's suggestion of business cards. So we are in the process of getting business cards for all of you from Vista Prints. And what it will do is it will direct, whenever you get those, folks within the community that want to talk to you about a pending development application, you now will just have a card to say, hey, great, we'd love to get your opinions on that and input. Here's, here's how you can do that. And it will direct them to the website into a portal where they can provide public comment or they can find out more information to attend the meeting. And so it kind of will help with those kind of awkward conversations at the post office and the grocery store or wherever. So we're creating those for you. And then community planning and development, we're always your, you know, I would just say, when in doubt, reach out. And we will either get you more information, will be your resource for the source of information as well. So I think Casey kind of highlighted that in her presentation too. You know, when you're in those sticky situations, reach out to us first and we'll help you manage them. What do we expect from staff? So your application materials, once we accept an application, and what that means per code is applicants have to go through a pre-application meeting with staff. And we go through what is required for them to submit pursuant to whatever kind of application they're going to do. Everything from a rezon, minor sub, major sub, conditional use permit. Once they submit all their materials to us, we go through and do a completeness review. And you won't hear from us until we deemed the application complete. Once we take it in, we believe that they've provided us with all the information that we need in order to start the research and review of their application. We deem it complete. And per code, our goal is to do that in a 10 day timeframe. We have one applicant currently though, that we're in the second review with. We've already gone through one, we still, and we didn't have it when they resubmitted. And so we're waiting for a second kind of try at giving us all the information that we need. It's a complex application. It's a mining application. So sometimes our more complex applications can take a couple iterations with staff before we feel like that we can accept them. But once that happens, we create what's called the overview sheet. And then we post it on the website and we send it to all of you. On it is a link that will take you directly to all of the application submitted documents that the applicant has submitted to us. And so at that point, we set the public hearing, which is generally 30 days to 45 days away. So you get those, all of their application materials well in advance of the hearing that you're going to have. So that's kind of when you get that. This year, it is our goal as staff to get you staff reports a week in advance. Sometimes in the past, they have only been two, 48 hours in advance. This year, we're going to try really hard to get those to you, particularly on those harder applications with a little more time to digest them. Sometimes it's a lot to take in, but staff tries to be very thorough in their review. And so the staff report will contain an introduction. It will give you a background on the application. It will explain the key elements. It will include all of the comments from all the referral agents. We go out to a very long list of stakeholders by statute. We're required to send subdivision and some other applications to certain agencies. You will get all of their comments. And we start putting all of their comments in that same drive that the overshit gives you a link to as they come in. So if you keep kind of checking that, you'll see that we just keep building that pile up too. But the staff report will contain all of that. It'll give you, it will give you all of the approval criteria again. What does this application have to prove or have to substantiate in order to, for a decision, a positive approval decision to be made? So the staff report will highlight for you specifically what the code says they have to meet, which turn into being the findings. Those criteria have to be met or found in order for an approval. If they can't be found as they appear in the application, staff occasionally, oftentimes will give conditions. If this condition were met, then these findings could be met. So staff will suggest conditions to meet those findings as well. We'll go into a discussion about all of that information, how it pertains, and then we'll give you a recommendation.
So when you say noting all the code, you're talking about the land development code?
Correct. And if there's other, you know, we identify like when there's other jurisdictions that have authority and what they think. If it's like division of water resources, if it's the building code, if it's, so you know, oftentimes we will bring in the relevance of other agencies, whether they have jurisdiction or other codes that might be relevant to the proposal as well. Like in mining, we've got Department of Reclamation, mining and safety. So we'll bring in what DRMS has to say or their permits that are relevant. So it really, the staff report is meant to be, not that we suggest that this is the way to do it, but if you had nothing more than the staff report before you had the hearing, you would have a wealth of information to be able to inform you in your decision-making. And then we also provide you with suggested motions. Casey spends some time talking about motions and motions are, the manner in which they are made is very important for us. I'm looking over at Chris because I'm sure she would encourage that as well. So staff provides you with the actual dialogue in how to make a motion to approve, approve with conditions or to deny an application. So as Joey can attest to, or if you, the rest of you have all served on boards or Amy and Larry. So as Joey can attest to, or if the rest of you have all served on boards or Amy and Larry, sometimes when you get to that part, everybody kind of looks around and it's really nice to kind of have a script in front of you of knowing how to start making those motions. You're not bound by the motions that staff gives you. You can, you will have discussion on them and you may choose to amend them. You may choose to adjust whatever staff's recommendations have been. And so you have all the authority in the world to adjust those accordingly based on what you heard on the record.
From my experience, staff has done an amazing job of consolidating the information, providing for recommendations.
Thanks Larry, appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work you did.
Okay, so next we're going to, we're going to kind of divide out our hearings. We talked about this with Casey a little bit, but this is, what do we do before a quasi-judicial public hearing? A quasi-judicial public hearing is when you have an applicant who is coming, who has applied through a land use application for an entitlement. So first, obviously we already went through how to kind of review all the materials. Reach out to staff with your concerns and questions. Pay careful attention if you visit the site or the business. So, and again, you don't want to call up your fellow commission members and say, hey, I was going to go out and look at this property out on Mountain View Drive. Do you want to go with me? So you would do an independent site visit. If the property owner is onsite, you have very little interaction with them. You know, certainly make yourself known so that they know who you are if they're present, but you try to not have any interaction with them. Just say, I'm just looking at the site. And you know, be cautious about how going into even, sometimes it's the perception that you are onsite making a deal with the applicant ahead of the public hearing, if somebody were to drive by that's opposed to the application. So just pay really careful attention. Sometimes in the past, the, we had an application for a gravel pit out on Birdseye or off Highway 91. And because the location and the significance of the approx, how close it was going to be to like the Arkansas River, Old Meadow Waters of the Arkansas River, we wanted, we decided to do, to take all the Planning Commission members and the Board of County Commissioners onsite and let the applicant tell us a little bit of the placement of different things. So we did that as a group. We took recording equipment onsite. We recorded everything that was said and it was basically an extension of the public meeting. So occasionally we might do site visits, but staff and legal will work together to make sure that if we do that, we're doing it and we're ensuring due process. So quasi-judicial public hearing has due process. We need to make sure that we follow very specific guidelines. And I'm going to get into the public hearing, kind of how that works in another slide. And then use your business cards, because this is, this is that ex parte situation. And that's why we want you to be careful onsite, that you don't have any information or gain any information that any of your other fellow decision-makers are recommending members of the Planning Commission or the deciding members of the Board of Adjustment have. And so whenever somebody approaches you, just go ahead and use those. Explain to them too, you know, it's important. You may share, you may be like-minded with that person that's reaching out and you don't want them to jeopardize your vote. So you know, that's always another thought is that when that very passionate person comes to want to talk to you and sway your opinion, you may, you may see some merit there, but you want to make sure you're not creating a bias and that, that you don't engage in specific comments about the application. But now we're all human and so occasionally maybe something inadvertently happens. You will have the opportunity before every public hearing to disclose, you can remedy ex parte communication. And what that means is you can say, I met so-and-so at the grocery store. They started talking before, I couldn't find the business cards, I didn't have it, they said this. And I just want to share with everybody that this happened, but I feel that I do not have any bias on this and I can participate in this hearing. So you can share with the group. Ex parte communication doesn't, you can cure it by sharing it with the group. Or if you discovered some information, if you share it with all members that are going to be making decisions, you have an opportunity to cure that ex parte. And so then just the don't, don't discuss the application with either members of the board, not just your planning commission. Don't reach out to the county commissioners. Don't talk to the applicant or members of the committee. That's what your staff is for. What to do before a legislative public hearing? So short-term rental is a very good example. We're going to be having a short-term rental application for a new policy at the end of the month. And again, review the materials, but you can reach out to us with your questions and concerns, but you get to engage with the public. You can come to all the town hall meetings. You can encourage the public to bring their thoughts and ideas forward. And so a legislative policy change, where we're going to come in, we're going to change the rules, we're going to change the policies. Those are legislative. And so you don't have to worry about that ex parte communication. You can participate when we go out and we have stakeholder engagement meetings. And we've had several with short-term rentals. So is there anything, Chris, that I missed in there that you'd like to?
Just as a rule of thumb, my suggestion is to think of in the context of, if somebody's talking to you about something that will directly impact them, it's kind of just them, that's where you're acting in a more judicial role. Think of yourself as the judge of their application. With legislated, you know, type activities, code, things like that, that's the big umbrella. It's not just going to impact that one specific property owner. And one of the issues with the due process for the judicial part is that, you know, think of it as because you are being a judge in regards to their property use, they have certain property rights that are vested under both state and federal constitution. So just think that if it's just one person's going to be impacted, more than likely you need to avoid that type of communication with them because you might be the judge in their application going forward. Whereas the big umbrella, you want to hear from the constituents about how it might impact the community overall.
Thank you. The public hearing process itself, what does that look like? So what we have prepared ahead of time for whomever is chairing a public hearing is a script. And it explains to the members of the audience, the public that has come very passionately to share their input on an application, how the evening's going to happen. It spells out the authority that both the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission have. And then just how the evening's going to do, how the evening's going to go. So the script gets read first, then generally staff will do their presentation first. We'll do a PowerPoint, we'll tell you the nature of the application, we'll hit the high spots in the staff report. And then we'll ask for any questions by either the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners or the Board of Adjustment. And if there are no further questions, we'll introduce the applicant. And the applicant has the opportunity or their representative to present their proposal. After they're done with their presentation, again, there's the question opportunity for both Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners or the Board of Adjustment of the applicant. Then we open for public comment. And so we generally tell the public to keep their comments relevant and not redundant. So if someone's already made the point that someone else has made, we just ask them to say, I support that viewpoint. Because sometimes we can have a lot of public comments. That same application for the Birdseye gravel pit was, we had to move it to the courtroom. So sometimes we will, this room is not very big and it doesn't have very good ventilation. So when I know, when staff identifies that we've got, we're going to have a lot of people turn out, we generally book the courtroom or another venue that we can make sure that we can not have people standing in the hallway. And we ended up having to limit comment to three minutes. There were a lot of very impassioned people that we wanted to hear from that evening, but at some point, sometimes we have to limit public comment.
There's only one opportunity for public comment or?
Yes. And so let me, that's a great, let me, I'll finish this, but that is a really great question, something I didn't include on here that I'd love to share with you. So after the public comment is closed, the applicant though does have the opportunity to rebut or reply to any public comment if they so choose. The other thing is that we direct the public to make sure that they are giving their comment to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. There's not supposed to be any interaction between the audience with one another. And so there's direction in the script and the chair manages that public comment. Because it can get, it can kind of go in a lot of different directions. And so the chair, it's really their role to make sure that we have, maintain that part of the hearing process. Once we close the public hearing or the public comment portion of the hearing, then we go into discussion. And the Planning Commission and the board has an opportunity to ask any questions that they want. But the public comment portion is closed. So those comments typically come to staff and staff can ask the applicant questions. But once the comment, once they've heard from the applicant and the public comment is closed, there's no more discussion with the applicant or members of the audience. So the discussion happens between the Planning Commission and the board and they direct their questions to staff. And if we have to, we ask, I know it sounds a little clunky, but we ask the applicant and they would answer the question for us. At that point, after everybody feels as though they've gotten enough information on the hearing, then the Planning Commission will look to make a motion. And at that point, the Board of County Commissioners, they lead the public hearing. And that is intended for them not to have any influence on what the Planning Commission's recommendation is. So once they've heard everything, they've had the same ability to anticipate, ask questions of staff, the applicant and the Planning Commission. They leave the meeting and we go into the motion made by the Planning Commission and then you have the ability to discuss that motion and then take a vote on it. And sometimes the motion that we start with is not the motion that finally gets approved. Sometimes we, several motions are made and deliberation happens and we take a vote, that one doesn't pass, then we have a new motion on the floor. So we can go through a couple of different iterations of a motion process. And I already hit the vote. So once we, after the deliberation, we take a roll call vote of all members. And the final majority vote is the recommendation that staff takes to the Board of County Commissioners for a decision. So you brought up a really good point and something that's a very, very unique to Lake County. You're not going to find it in most other jurisdictions, although right now it's being recommended to other jurisdictions. Most other jurisdictions have a separate public hearing for the Planning Commission and a separate public hearing for the Board of County Commissioners. In Lake County, we have, we've made one. So the applicant gets one bite at the apple, you guys get one bite at the apple and the Board of County Commissioners. So we have one consolidated public hearing. You're only, they don't, the applicant doesn't present to you and then go and have a whole different hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. When the Board of County Commissioners decide the file, staff brings them the motion and gives them any of the notes, information. We also send them the recording of your deliberation so they can actually watch you deliberate. And they act on the file. So they don't open up the public hearing again, they only act on the file at that point. There is state legislation that is pushing us to streamline our development review. And this is, our model is being used as kind of a model throughout the state right now as a way to increase efficiencies and not having the two separate meetings. And so I don't think that's going to, I think our model's going to stay in place. And it works, it's a lot less work for staff to prepare for one public hearing instead of two. And it also, just, the one thing is, everybody's got to be real prepared for that one, meaning the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission, because we just have the one public hearing. So thank you for that question because it's really important. What can happen is that the Board of County Commissioners could say, I, they're only, and everyone can only make their decision, and Casey kind of got into, in a little bit of detail on this, on the evidence before them during the public hearing. So please keep in mind, if you heard X, Y, and Z over here, or it was on social media over here, you can only make your decisions, you're only a judge on what the evidence presented to you within the hearing itself. You have to, you know, disengage with anything else. So staff doesn't really spend a lot of time looking at social media. But not saying that you can't or you shouldn't, I'm just saying, you know, you've got to come in with no bias and you can't let those peripheral kind of comments or thoughts or things like that influence you the day of your decision-making. You're held to, what the code says that you can consider and the evidence presented to you the day of the hearing. Okay, is that? All right. What's coming up? What should you all get ready for? So for the Planning Commission, our very next meeting in two weeks is a great big policy. It's a big policy on short-term rentals. And so again, I would encourage you to look at the website because it's going, we've got a polling opportunity right now for three different options that we've been collecting data on. And that is, should we keep short-term rental licenses in where they are at? Cap them where they are, which is 127 licenses and Lake County is what we've been working from. Because we took the amount of licenses that we had at the beginning of the work. We don't quite have that many registered right now, but 127 licenses. Keep it right, cap it right where it is. The option B is to increase it to the same amount of licenses that the city currently has at 170. And then option three is no cap at all. That we should continue to allow them without any limitation. So that is on our website, you can vote on it. But you might want to look at the regulations too. The next two weeks, reach out to staff if you haven't really been kind of engaged in this discussion and you want more. But we do have the recordings, you can watch them. You can see EPS and staff did a presentation on what our recommendations are. Our recommendations are on our, both our slide decks, both EPS's recommendation and staff's recommendations are online. So you can see all of the work that we've been doing. It's at the ready for you. But if you have questions about them, reach out. Because we'll be asking you to consider these for adoption on the 26th of February. March 11th will be a work session on a code amendment, legislative process. Staff wants, this is something staff is bringing before you, but what we're asking for in a nutshell is that we want a finding, a criteria that says that all, under certain types of applications, but a good vast majority of them, we want them not to only be compliant with a sketch plan, but any other adopted policies by Lake County. Policies, codes by Lake County such as affordable housing, growth plans, transportation plans. We want to make sure that all of those are consistent with those other needs that we're working on. We're right in the middle of updating our housing needs assessment. And so we want to make sure that all of our new development is aligning with those other. We don't want to do that policy on a shelf kind of idea that's just growing dust. We want to make sure that as we're really being mindful about what the best planning, future strategic planning is for the community, that we're applying that specifically and it's codified so that it's very explicit. Staff's going to do that anyway, but we just thought it was better to make it very explicit for development, that it's in our code. So it's a pretty straightforward quote amendment, but we're going to just bring that to you on March 11th. And then we're actually going to ask for you on March 25th to adapt it into the code. March 25th, Angel View 2 Sketch. I do believe we have, do we have an overview available? I do believe we have, do we have an overview available? Okay, so here's your first big overview. We deem this application complete, and this is a subdivision, big application. And so all the materials are already available to you. So you can go in, you can start checking it out. And again, we would be looking to get you the staff report the week before your hearing. When you get all of that information, if you have questions, reach out. We'll be happy to discuss any of it. If you have comments ahead of time, give them to us. You know, you say, wow, where are they on their division of water resources, water plan? A lot of that's gonna be in their application. But if you look through their application and you see specific questions, reach out. We're happy that, that's what we're here for. We're doing the research on it. And if you see a missing piece or you, you want more information on something, let us know. And, and we'll do that. Now, sometimes you get all of that information, and I'll be very honest, it's very overwhelming. That's what your staff is for. We're, we're already reviewing, we've already got it reviewed, sent the referral, sent out to all of the referral agencies. We're already working on the, the research on it. So it is not up to you to do an independent investigation on it or research on it. However, if you have comments, concerns, we welcome that. So don't feel like you're obligated to do your own independent research. That's what your staff's for. Board of Adjustment, you're, you have a hearing this week for a setback variance request off of Mountain View Drive. So those staff reports went out to the members of the Board of Adjustment on Saturday. So Amy and Larry, you should have those. And if you have any questions, I know you're both seasoned on the board. If you have any questions on those, reach out to us. Your other two members of the Board of Adjustment this year are Kayla Marcella and Tim Berry. And you will see on your agenda for the 15th that Cici's gonna send out, we will be asking you to do your appointments for your chair and secretary for 2024. So you will be all set. And I think, believe it or not, I'm at the end. So thank you for bearing with me. Happy for, Brian, Cici, or I are happy to answer any questions. And, and through this process, if you have suggestions for staff, things that make it easier for you, we're here to help you navigate this and make sure that we're providing you with what you need to, to do your job. So let us know how we can be supportive.
So I have a question real quick. So you mentioned the, the code amendments and that the land development code is electronic. Are those changes put directly into the document? Or are they an appendix to, you know, a list of changes at the end of the document? So are we gonna have to find it? How's that?
Well, I, I'm ready for that. So in all our wisdom, the code amendment is put into the actual document with at the bottom, the resolution and the date that we did it. So you don't have to go look, you know, all over like, oh, is this still the rule? The code is, is amended right in the document with the amendment and resolution number.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to suggest too, when you're in your role for like quasi judicial on a specific application, not to make it a habit to do your own individual research. If you have questions, bring those to staff. Let them research and share the information with everyone because there have been situations where the information you developed in your individual research, sharing that in the public forum or with the applicant and such can sometimes sort of an allegation of bias, especially if you're not, it leads you to think it should be approved. And so my suggestion is if you have questions about pending applications, please look into your staff. Let them try to find answers and share it with everybody so everybody's literally on the same page.
Great. Very good point. And I, I don't think, maybe I made that as clear as I should have. So, you know, we definitely want to be here for you. But again, you have to make your decisions based on the evidence presented to you, and we have to make sure everyone has the same evidence. So again, that's, that, you know, we're, we're gonna dive in there, but we, but you're welcome to see those applications ahead of time. But if you kind of a point that you don't have, you know, it's not intended for you to do your own investigation.
So I have a question on the March 25th. Is that considered a public hearing then?
Yes, on the 25th, that is, because we'll hear Angel View. So we'll have two different processes. You'll have a quasi judicial and you'll have the legislative as well. But we will take public comment on a short terminal, or no, on March 25th. We will take comment on code amendments too. So the public still has the ability to weigh in on code amendments, just like short term rentals, anticipate you're gonna get a lot of public comment on short terminals. It's a very polarized conversation, meaning we have proponents and we have, we don't have a, when you see the results of the poll, it's,
It's one or the other.
It's one or the other. We have people that think that they should be unregulated or highly regulated. There's not a lot of middle ground.
Yeah, I see.
So we'll, we'll have a lot of public comment on that topic. So, and staff will kind of highlight the, the findings and the recommendation on kind of the more balanced approach, which doesn't really, which is more in the middle.
Do you get a staff report for the legislative, like your old recommendation for that or synopsis of those things?
You sure do. Yeah, so you'll get a staff report for every single application because the code amendments are applications. So every application will have a staff report associated with it. Yeah. This goes back, any questions, Amy or Larry?
Goodbye, man. Thanks so much. And I know how much work you put into all of this.
Okay, great.
To have Steve and Joey, since I know both of them. And Joey's got some really good work, and Quinn Lenny, we're most grateful for.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, I'm gonna tell you, that's all staff has for you tonight. We tried to keep it short and sweet because,
Might be the fastest meeting ever.
Yeah, I was gonna say, short term rentals, please anticipate there's gonna be a longer process. You're gonna want to give everybody an opportunity to be heard. And your March 25th, I mean, sometimes, the other thing we try to make sure is that we don't overwhelm your agenda. You know, nobody's well served by fatigue of being here hours into the night. I mean, we've, we've gone as late as probably nine o'clock maybe, but,
That gravel pit meeting was close to the end.
Yeah, that one was. And, and then there was a lot of trying to get people out of the building afterwards and stuff. But, but we, we are really consider, try to be considerate of your time and also recognize that at some point, you can only take so much. So we try not to load up an agenda and we try to manage that.
The staff members are really well done. They help a lot.
So, but again, this is your staff and we're here to help you any way that we can. So welcome, and we're excited for 2024. I mean, 25th's gonna be an exciting year with a new public plan too. I hope that you all enjoy working through that. I think it's gonna be really exciting. So of course, we're gonna love the land use nerd, but. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Larry, for joining us tonight. And we'll see you two on Thursday.
We're good, and we will.
Bye bye.
Much, everybody.
4:59 of February 12.
Thank you, thank you.
The only thing that I would change for the staff reports, and I've mentioned this before, but it'll help with all of the new members, is to make sure that at least once in each staff report that the acronyms are spelled out. That helps a lot because we will absolutely get very many acronyms. Until you're familiar with them, they're, they're hard to remember. So at least once in a staff report, and I know it's a bunch, it really helps to spell it out.
That's a really, really good, yeah. We get kind of caught up in the jargon and acronyms and stuff.
Then you'd understand, yeah.
Well, and then everybody has different ones, right? Like our old director of emergency management, Mike McCard, ex military, his acronyms and my acronyms didn't match up. So when he would use one, I'd be like, but that, that's not what you mean, I don't think.
Could be worse. Some of the acronyms had three, same acronym had three meanings.
Yikes. So, yeah, we'll definitely be mindful of that. I'm sorry, let me stop.